And that would have to be addressed before any determination is made.
We determine based on the remediation, we'll call it, that we have a negative declaration.
Right, although I don't know that a vote has been taken on that yet, so I just want to be clear. Recall that we voted.
Well, let's look at the meeting.
It was, it was scheduled to be taken up at the June 11th meeting and then that was rescheduled for tonight, so.
Okay.
So that's the first order of business and then the second order of business is consideration of the, of the resolution.
All right, I'll make a motion that we give a negative declaration of Mr. Chase's topic. Second, second thing. We're gonna take a voice.
We agree.
Wait, can't vote, oh you can't vote. Steve?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes. Five of all.
Um, I do have, I, I've got the, an updated version of this for you to sign off on, Dan.
Mm-hmm.
Dated today's date, so. I have, you know, it hasn't changed since when I circulated it, other than the date, but if you'd like a copy, I've got copies for.
I'll take copies, just put my file there.
Sue's gonna need one.
Yeah.
They could back to Kevin.
Sue, give Sue one.
There's, there's two copies there, I think. I just need a signed copy.
Yep.
Sue, do you have a signed copy of this?
No.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. Kevin, do you want to discuss the email?
Uh, sure. So, as a, as a courtesy to Mr. Chase's attorney at his request, I sent him a, a draft of the resolution that was circulated. Couple weeks ago now, I think.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I didn't, I didn't hear anything back from, from the attorney, but then separately received the email from Mr. Chase that weighs in on each of the conditions. So, um, these are conditions that have been discussed in the course of, of the, you know, the proceedings here, taking into consideration comments from, from the public, from the application. I, as I think I had indicated in my email, I don't think it's posted here, I don't know that any of these come as any surprise. And I, I would, I think that what Mr. Chase was questioning is, you know, being locked into, to conditions that, you know, may not, um, may not be, be workable for one reason or another. I'm not speaking for him, but I think that's how I interpret the, you know, the conditions. The one, the one constructive point he, he did point out, the, and I think it's. Yeah, the dimensions of the.
I replied right away to the email to you. I caught it right off the bat.
Yes, you did. And I, and I, I don't know that I made that correction yet, so we'd have to.
Not really.
Have to reflect that in the proposal. So it's, it's a, um, a twenty-four foot by sixty-foot bathhouse and community space with utility room, as noted in the site plan submitted by LaSalle engineer. I mean, that's, that's what's, that's what the proposal is. And, uh, what else can I say about this? Yeah, so, yeah, in the first resolve, it still says, and I apologize, site plan submitted by the applicant for the use of the premises as a nine-pad campground with a twenty-foot by sixty-foot bathhouse, community space with utility room. That, I, that's proposed as, by the applicant, that's proposed, a final proposal of twenty-four feet by sixty feet. Is that correct, Alan?
Yes.
I just wanted to, you know, reflect that that's what the applicant's request is. It's no, it'd be a site plan. I, Dan, I don't know what more, you know, you.
I don't really want anymore.
Well, no, I don't know what more you want me to say.
I don't.
Okay, all right.
Our conditions are not negotiable. And I think when you and I and Kevin sat down, I told you it was take it or leave it. Uh, we're gonna vote on this tonight.
I don't believe the conditions that you're voting on are the conditions that were discussed in the meeting. I, I would discuss that, but it doesn't sound like you're interested in hearing any of that. I, can I ask a couple of questions about the conditions, or, or is that off the table?
We've never allowed it before.
Trying to avoid. It'd be nice if we all could be on the same table, I guess. I don't, I, as I read the conditions, I don't think what you have said to me is not what the condition says. We were at this, we were in this room a couple of weeks ago and you said to me that I could park vehicles on the property in the winter when the campground's not open anywhere I want.
I think we all agreed to that.
That's not what the conditions say. The conditions say I can only park in two very small designated areas ever, and I cannot park anywhere on the property when the campground is open. That's not what was discussed in this meeting, but that is what this says.
That was discussed with Kevin, you and me. Now, were you recording me?
I don't know, I don't know if you understand what I'm saying.
I do understand.
You said to me that if I wanted to park on the property when the campground was closed, that was fine. Now, I, I believe you meant that we could park more than just in the small designated areas.
I think that's what the intent was.
It's not what the conditions say. The conditions say I can only park in the designated areas when the campground's closed, and I can't park anywhere when the campground's open. I can't live with that. I've got a seven-and-a-half acre parcel that's gonna have nine campers, and your conditions say I can't use it for anything but nine campers in the summer, and I can't use it for anything except commercial parking in two little designated spots in the winter.
Well, the designated spots were proposed by, by you through.
To be used while the campground is open. So when the campground's open, I have limited commercial parking. When the campground's closed, I have unlimited commercial parking, you know, in lieu of whatever other laws may apply. But we're taking a seven-and-a-half acre parcel and I get to use a half of an acre of it to park nine campers in the summer and a half an acre of it to park twenty vehicles in the winter. That's what your conditions say. I don't think that's what you people proposed, but that is what they say. And. I, I think you're voting on conditions that you don't think you're voting on. There were discussions in this meeting about.
Kevin, you had a draft. Have you had a draft of the regulations?
I've got, yeah, I've got the whole here. I made copies for everyone, so.
There were, there were conditions, there was a condition discussed that we wouldn't put herbicide in the warehouse because it's a, a community use building. I've agreed to that. The conditions don't say that. The conditions say I can't have herbicide stored anywhere on the premises. Every one of my trucks have jugs of herbicide in them. I can't drive any of my trucks on the premises because they store herbicide on them. The conditions say, they, the conditions are much more than what was discussed in these meetings. That's why I proposed some revisions to them, not because I'm trying to get out of the conditions, I'm just trying to limit them to what was discussed here.
Yeah. Well, I have a hard time reading the red print, I might do my print as well.
No chemical hazard storage shall be permitted anywhere on the premises is, is number A. Anywhere on the premises is much different than in the building.
I'm just going by the May twenty-eighth meeting, I mean, notes and everything you discussed. I'm the one paying on the chemicals, as you know.
Mm-hmm.
And you said there's gonna be no storage of pesticides, chemicals at that site. Twenty-five, twenty-three, twenty-five, it's all gonna be down at three-eighty-nine. That's you.
Correct, our bulk storage.
Now, we've got trucks that's gonna be storing chemicals.
They don't store chemicals, but they have them in them. I mean, I, I have, we have toolboxes that have a jug of, a half jug of chemical in them all over the place. They could be parked in this parking lot, they could be parked at Lowe's, wherever else. I totally understand the, the not wanting a bathhouse with herbicide, bulk herbicide storage next door to it. And that's what I understood I was agreeing to, or, or that what you people wanted, my understanding of that was you didn't want bulk storage in that building.
My understanding, you said no pesticides, chemical storage down at that site. It's gonna be a three-eighty-nine, stored down there, you would go down there and mix there and then go to the field, go to your sites.
That is our.
That's what you said, that's what's in the meeting.
That is our intent, no bulk storage. We're not storing it there.
I'm just telling you, you said no chemicals at twenty-three, twenty-five. You said that and it's in our notes. And I asked you specifically about that.
It was my intent, that we were not.
So now, now we're standing, there's all sorts of vehi- I'm not, I shouldn't say all sorts. There's gonna be vehicles down there with chemicals stored in them. I, I would ask the questions, are they labeled, they have the decals for the DEC?
Right, that's all regulated by the DEC.
You look at stuff we have outside now with this heat, so now they're in vehicles at ninety, ninety degrees plus.
This is all regulated by the DEC.
Forty to ninety degrees.
This is all regulated by the DEC.
Exactly.
We are in compliance with the DEC.
Again, I go back to what you said. We're not going to have pesticides down at twenty-three, twenty-five. Tell me, which is it? Again, we move this all the time with you, Alan.
Okay.
I heard of it.
Right, on the vehicle parking, even on the draft, I mentioned to Kevin that I had a problem with vehicles. Are you gonna have campground, or are you gonna have housing for your workers?
Yeah. I have to agree with that.
So, so nine campers can be utilized on this parcel in the summer, and I can park twenty vehicles on it in the winter. And that's what the property is limited to by your conditions. That's what, that's what this says.
I don't think we set that, I don't think that was the intent. The intent was in the winter, uh, you were gonna park your vehicles over there.
It's not what this says.
I'm, I'm reading some of your comments, 'cause I.
Yeah, so, well, it's just for the sake of everyone, I can read it. It's basically, it's condition I. So this moved a bit during conversations. Dan originally suggested no parking of commercial vehicles at all. I, I pushed back that there was a lot of potential parking here and I needed it, especially in the winter. We suggested and illustrated a small designated parking area for commercial vehicles that did not interfere with the camp sites intended to be utilized in conjunction with the campground. I think Dan agreed. It was not intended for when the campground was not in use. Dan is on board with this and he mentioned he could, he could use, we could use more land in the winter when the campground was closed. What I was expecting here and would prefer is commercial vehicle parking in the designated areas only when the campground is operational. No restrictions other than parking in an orderly, clean manner when the campground is closed. This is what I believe Dan was agreeing to at our last meeting. And allows me reasonable use of the property while limiting the parking when the camp sites are active. New York State DEC allows parking in the buffer area with a permit. I don't want to give up that ability if we were to apply for it in the future. Can we amend to no parking in the buffer without written permission of the DEC? That's, that's the full comment.
I would agree to, to that. Kevin, I think that's reasonable.
To park in the buffer?
No, you gotta have a permit for that. Guy was in there yesterday.
No, that's what I'm saying, are you saying you're agreeing to let him park in the buffer?
No.
Oh, okay, I, I misunderstood you then, 'cause that's what it sounded like.
No. No.
Just clarity on that. The DEC has jurisdiction over the buffer?
Correct.
If I apply to the DEC and they say that under these conditions you can park in the buffer, the planning board would, would entertain forbidding that? Is that what your position is?
Personally, yes, I would.
Let me, let's just be clear, we're talking about the wetland buffer, not the buff, landscape buffer.
Right.
Correct.
The wetland buffer, underfoot.
We did that with somebody else, that the DEC put down parameters and we overwrote some of those parameters.
Gotta refresh me on that one.
I think the gravel bed were the hours.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it was simple, but it was still there.
What's the board think about this? And, and this is, I'm telling you what, we're bending over backwards for you on this. 'Cause normally I'd say it's over, we'll call for a vote, and it's gonna be one way or the other. If this is our error on here, then we'll own. If it's not, then we're gonna vote. Let's talk to the board. And parking.
I, I think it should either be a campground or a parking lot. That's my opinion. If you wanna, if you wanna park them off-season when you're not using it as a campground, then it's one thing. You wanna have a peck, campground or you wanna have a parking lot, it's one or the other. That's my opinion.
All right, off-season.
I'm only one person, so.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have a chat. What do you think?
I'm gonna agree with Alan on this. I know what he's going through as a business owner. You need the space, especially off-season for storage. And, and as long as he plays by the rules with a buffer permitting, which he might not use anyway, but during the winter, should be no issue with him using his property to store and put that stuff. That's off-season though, as long as it says that.
Right, just to clarify, that's.
Yep.
Well, I didn't wish.
What about in, in season?
In season?
I, I just, I wanna be.
No, I, I was just trying to clarify that that's what I was saying, is.
I mean, we went around and around trying to neaten up the property, uh, you know, designated areas and all that. And I thought we came to an understanding on that. But I understand once he brings all of his vehicles back from five different states, whatever it is, in the winter, he doesn't need the room, I get that. But, yeah, we'd like the place, you know, organized, kept clean, something like that.
So Miss, what you're saying is no parking while the campground is.
Designated parking when he, during the campground season, but in the winter when, when he shuts down, if he needs the space.
I don't have an issue with that.
I get it.
Okay, so that's a little different than what I'm understanding. So there's, there's essentially two designated areas.
I know exactly what you're saying.
Okay, so, what, what I'm hearing you say is you're okay with that during the season, and then off-season he can park, he can use the whole space to park, as long as it's orderly. What I'm hearing you say.
And it's not the buffer, and it's not the buffer.
Yeah, buffer's a whole nother situation.
But I wanna be clear, 'cause what I hear you saying is.
No, I understand that he needs, he needs to park some vehicles there when he's got the campers there. I mean, I get that, okay? But, large-scale parking lot, no. Only off-season.
Okay, so, but you're okay with parking, I'm gonna call it in-season, when the RVs are there in these designated areas?
Yes.
He can park his, his other commercial vehicles, I guess. Okay.
So, we are basically on the same page.
Makes perfect sense to me, I just wanna make sure it reads that way on the paper.
I agree with ninety, ninety percent of it. I, I don't think, and I, I don't wanna put a burden on them, but. Campground in our law is three acres. So, those trucks and those parking areas are, are encroaching into those three acres.
Acres, yeah.
During the off-season, I don't care if he puts three hundred trucks in there, it's, it's off-season.
Right.
If it's gonna be a campground, it's a campground.
Good point, Benny.
I have eight trucks parked at a campground in Iowa right now that I just left, that they're lot behind all the campers, they run out to people to park trucks. You know, so this isn't, this isn't unusual to what campgrounds do, but.
We, we have a vision prescribed above, and I think that's what, that's the issue right now, is we're trying to follow, we're trying to let people do what they need to do, but we're trying to follow the vision that we see prescribed to be. To have things look good, to not, that's all, I'll just say that.
So, but the lot's seven-and-a-half acres, Al? So even if three acres.
Doesn't have seven-and-a-half acres usable property.
Okay, 'cause of the wetland.
Well, there's, there's a wetland on a portion of it. With permits, we could do anything on the seven-and-a-half acres. I have seven, I have seven-and-a-half acres of land that I own there, correct.
But you're cutting it in half with the three acres of. So, if the DEC gives you permits to do stuff on the back half of it, that's, the DEC's.
That's another issue.
Right.
It's another plan.
All right, can we modify this one?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm working on it right now, I'm just.
So if we stick with three acres though, then is it no parking?
There's very limited parking, there's very little over three acres.
We have campgrounds now, but people pull their vehicles and welders on, equipment on.
Can I look at it for a second?
Also, brandings, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause the area, the parking area is almost as big as the area for the campers. So how many vehicles would park in that section, Al? The ones what, hundred by? The one in the back, the bigger, the bigger area.
What's the dimension on it?
I think, if I'm reading it right, a hundred by one-sixty-five, if that sounds right?
I don't know, it's been a while since I've looked at that particular part, but a hundred feet, uh, by a hundred and sixty-five, you might fit, uh, you know, if, if each vehicle's gonna take at least forty feet in length, so you could park two back to each other, and a hundred and sixty-five feet wide might fit twelve, ten, twelve in a row. So twenty, twenty to twenty-five.
Twenty-five vehicles.
Twenty to twenty-five vehicles potentially. We own about a hundred and seventy-five.
I just feel like it's gonna end up looking more like a parking lot.
It will in the winter.
Not. Not with those two spaces there, just what you just said, it's like twenty-five trucks. In the second, in the, in the back section.
In this plan, he's using as much for truck parking as he's for.
As he's using for the campers.
Most of the time when the campers are used, the trucks are on the road. The trucks aren't moving, there ain't made them up. Storage-wise, it's mostly in the winter, I would think, right? Am I missing that?
Yeah, there's a need in the summer as well to, to have limited parking, but twenty-five trucks in the summer would be reasonable. Twenty-five in the winter is.
Yeah.
Not, I mean, it sounds like a lot sitting here talking about it, but twenty-five trucks is, it's not a lot of trucks. It might be in your driveway, but it's.
Yeah, I get it. What are you doing now? Twenty-five in the lap of the summer. Man, I'm like. What are you doing now? With your help? Are they on the road?
Uh, the vast majority of them are on the road. There are four campers at CTG at, at our other property, that I think have a few people staying in them, but the closest job that those guys are working on right now is Lockport. So I've got seven campers and a campground in Lockport, and everybody else is further away from then, from here than that. There's probably six, eight guys staying here.
So how many campers are out there?
Somewhere.
No, you're, you're probably.
Just, just the four.
Four, four of them at.
Three-eighty-nine.
Three-eighty-nine, and I've had four of them at my house, uh, until the last week, they all left and went to, to Lockport, and they're in a campground in Lockport. And then there's another fifteen campers scattered all over the country.
What do you think, Kevin?
So, uh, I think what I'm, I'm just proposing the following, I guess, and, and this is editing on the fly, so bear with me.
It's all right.
So I would read, "Commercial vehicle parking of applicant's vehicles shall be permitted in these specified areas containing the current site plan when the campground is in operation and shall be confined to a space measuring one-forty-five by fifty on the east side of the premises and an area measuring one-hundred by one-sixty-five to the southeast of the RV site, provided the applicant remains one-hundred feet outside the delineated wetland areas as determined by the DEC. The applicant shall be allowed to park vehicles on the premises in off-season utilizing all available space, provided the vehicles are parked outside the one-hundred-foot delineated DEC wetland area." Is that?
Sounds fair to me.
Makes sense.
And it makes sense, yeah. I will make that change. This is the first time we've ever negotiated.
No, that's, that's not what me and Missy were, we still got, it's not a campground anymore.
Still think it's too big, yeah, I mean. I'm trying, I really am, I'm trying, you know?
Three acres is what our law says for the campground. So, measure it out, and anything outside of that, really don't have any say, that's still his property, he can do whatever he wants. The way this is drawn, it's a, it's a truck parking lot with some camper, some campers on it.
There's nothing in your law that says you can't park in a campground.
Not yet.
Good thing I'm here tonight.
No, we're looking at the other law tonight, too. All right, anybody, any other comments, concerns?
I, I still go back to the original, it still shows, everything still shows two separate lots there. I asked this question like six times. When one owner, you're supposed to go back to one lot.
It's my understanding that the lots merged upon the sale, so you had the smaller parcel, right? That's essentially where that lands.
We're still showing two separate addresses.
Twenty-five and twenty.
On the county tax records, you're saying?
No, I've got all this paperwork.
Oh. Well, I think, uh, I mean, I, I verified with the county that the, the properties are merged and they're all owned by Alan or his company.
So they're probably not gonna change the address because of the nine-one-one, probably, is what I guess, maybe, is that bad?
No, I mean, I.
It's gonna stay, it's gonna stay to the addresses?
I'm almost positive it's twenty-three to twenty-five county room. And that's not unusual, there's other properties, I, I just dealt with a, a property over on county room fifty-three that's eleven-forty to eleven-forty-four, and it contains three separate, it's all one parcel, but it contains three separate.
Were they some standard lots, though?
They were, 'cause two, one was a house, and, and two of them are, are trailers, trailer pads. But it's eleven-forty, eleven-forty-two, and eleven-forty-four. When you look at the county tax records, it shows up, the official address is eleven-forty dash eleven-forty-four, county room fifty-three. So I, I think, I'm pretty sure that this is, this is accurate, and it is one tax parcel now. This, I mean, this, this issue with, um, the insurability of RV trailers, I, I mean, I, I don't know. The insurability of R V trailers, I, I mean, I, I don't know.
They're taking them in and out, he's gonna have them registered.
They gotta be registered though, around the world, around the world, then they're registered, and I guess. I guess you're gonna have hopefully property insurance or something.
So we're okay with just registered?
What's everybody else that, 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 that? I think that was my. I was thinking more.
The.
Somebody's propane blew up and, but I guess it's not our problem.
No. If um, if you're calling anything.
It's covered, it's covered, right, but they gotta be registered and inspected though.
I, I have a question on that. When I had a um, uh seasonal spot in front of Meach, I did not have to have.
You didn't have to insure it?
I didn't have to have it registered.
Insurance and that registration?
We, we had insurance.
They probably, I don't know, maybe they did mandate it, who knows, the presence. I think my thought around that was so that they're not junk. You know, that they're registered and inspected, so they're roadworthy.
Do our own inspections.
Yeah, that's, that was my thought, okay, so. Now you see, you see, go by, some places and you see old R Vs that are sitting, that.
All over town.
That's an eyesore.
There is a ten-year law in a lot of states, that ten years in the junk.
That's mobile homes, I think.
No, it's R Vs.
Isn't R Vs too?
Yeah, I gave Kevin the uh, the complete, how to start up a campground. It was pretty, pretty in-depth.
Cause a lot of R Vs are old.
Well folks, what's your, uh, what's your priority? We're gonna vote on this tonight.
Is there anything else on here on the emails? I'm trying to figure out anything under the email.
Well, there was, there was the issue with the chemical storage, there's no issue with uh, the B, planning of native species. Um, C, the year-round, no year-round campground use is permitted and shall be limited to the months of March through November. Um, the comment was, intended operation is spring to fall, however, I can't predict if further needs could arise. Conversations about this were primarily around the use of the property for winter vehicle storage. I prefer to agree to a condition that storage on the property is limited to when the campground is operational. If deeper winter use were required, it would be allowable, providing the heavy vehicle storage was not present. I believe the board's concern was this should be a storage lot or a campground, but not both simultaneously.
Correct.
That last statement was cool.
That ask was asking to take the date off of this and just put in a use restriction. So if this gets busy and we need it as a campground year-round. I can run it as a campground year-round, I just can't use the, the, the lot as parking year-round. So it, so it would, it would eliminate the need to come back here and ask to open the campground year-round. It's just a. Change in wording of from March to October to it's either a campground or heavy commercial parking, but not both simultaneously.
Um, is there anything with the water department or anything as far as that goes with, with, if it was gonna be used year-round? I mean, a lot of, like, a lot of other campgrounds, the, the water is like basically shut off.
That's either the owner, that's not.
What I'm saying, cause it, it can't affect like any freezing or anything, can it?
The line could freeze.
Well, what I'm saying, or, I'm just.
No, I get it.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, maybe I covers it, because what we said is that commercial vehicle parking. Uh, shall be permitted in specified areas. When the campground. And shall be confined to those areas, the, the two that are designated, when campground is, is in operation. Right, so. I guess the question becomes, what, you know, what defines in operation, but I could say if there's a camper out there. Being occupied, then it's an operation, whether it's one or nine, right?
Yes.
Let me, let me ask, is there, is the intention to remove those R Vs in off, quote, off-season, or just keeping them there because you're gonna?
I would think that they'll be there, and there may be twenty more. In the off-season.
Right.
Right, that would be part of the commercial parking is.
For storage.
For storage purposes, right. Yeah, and I'm, and I'm, I don't think what I was asking for was reducing what I understood the board's. Uh, desire to be. It was just, it was just wording it in a way that I didn't think was more restrictive than the board's intent. You guys didn't want it to be a campground, at the same time that it's a large parking lot. So, we talked a lot about summer and winter because that kinda jives with my season. But, you know, the seasons can move a little bit. There could be an outage in October that I find. You know, is, is really popular. The campground's real popular for an outage. Maybe I wanna say, hey, we're gonna park somewhere else, or we're gonna hold vehicles. You know, out of state for another month, and we're gonna operate the campground until December first, then we'll bring everything back. You know, that's, that's what I'm envisioning is the potential. Or maybe it grows and it becomes so popular that we just try to find someplace else to park vehicles and, you know, and we expand the campground part of it. But, I, that, that's, the, the parking is the biggest.
Issue.
Issue for me is, is especially in the winter months, I need as much parking as I can possibly get.
And I think we covered that.
Yep.
So is C even needed then?
C.
If the intent is that I can't be a parking lot and a campground, then do you need to specify when the campground can be open? I just can't be both.
Mixed use. If either is a campground being used, or it's a storage parking area being used, can't be both at the same time. One of the.
Parking is limited to the designated areas when the campground's in use. And it's unlimited when the campground's not in use.
See, and I, I must be reading this wrong. But I, yeah, to me, I'm interpreting that as we said, he could park off-season in most spots.
Only.
It says only.
Off-season commercial parking, only shall be permitted in the specified areas. Off-season.
Right.
So off-season I take to mean is when the campground's not there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and we're talking about the one forty-five by fifteen, the hundred by one sixty-five.
Right.
But he's saying he wants to park it there while the campers are there. So that's in-season.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we agreed to.
We just talked about that.
But that's not what this, that's, this.
Right, so that's how.
That's why I think it changes.
We changed it.
It's not what this was discussed, it's what was written.
Alright, so that's where you were saying you had the conversation with him to change, okay. I'm just clarifying the.
The way it got written was not, I was expecting to see something written that said that there was restrictions on parking when the campground was open. And there was no restrictions on parking when the campground was closed. And it got written as there's no parking when the campground's open, and there's restricted parking when campground's closed.
Alright, I'm just clarifying, I'm sorry, Al, it's been a long weekend.
No, I wanna get.
I don't wanna be, I don't wanna get myself confused.
I wanna get this resolved tonight.
Yeah.
Alright, this has been on our, our plate for way too long.
So, I guess I could go back to my question on, on letter C of the conditions. Is that needed if we're addressing the park? Do we care if it's frankly, a year-round campground?
No.
Year-round campground, it's not uncommon. It's not, there's, there's a lot of year-round campground.
If it's a year-round campground, then is parking on-site is limited to those designated areas?
Right.
Right, if it's shut down.
I still say that the designated areas have to be outside the three acres of the campground. During the sea, if he's open. If they're using it, there's nothing in that three acres. And those, those are in the three acres.
See, that, I think that's, I thought that's why we put that in there.
He still has room, he's just janky. Then it do any, it's, it's a campground.
And parking, separate.
Alright, we've modified I to cover off-season parking. Correct?
That's what we're still discussing. Or you can. Use it as a parking campground storage building?
I was just trying to go a little more.
Alright, go ahead, Kevin.
No, it's, no, I, I think we're on C, and, and it's okay, I, you know, ultimately, it's a, it's a.
I don't see where C is needed, Kevin, as long as it's either a campground, like, if it cools yourself. Alright, my, alright. Alright, now let's go through C.
Yeah, so I guess the fundamental question is, is that even needed anymore?
No.
Is there consensus on that?
Any other thoughts? Since it's covered in I.
We have the, you know, I'm breaking my own rule here, but indeed, it's limited to nine, nine vehicles. And I restricts the parking. Uh, does it really matter whether it's a, a, all-year-round campground operation or, or seasonal? I mean, and again, Vinny's point is valid, but setting that aside for a moment, I'm just. Asking if, if it matters whether it's year-round or, or seasonal operation.
The only thought that I'm gonna throw into that is, when we had the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Did we tell the people that it was going to be certain months? That, I'm just, what you said, I'm just bringing that up to.
I think there was some discussion about that, but in fairness to Alan, I think he or his attorney kinda left the, the, the option open that it could be longer. And I, I don't think that. You know, we're pulling the wool over anyone's eyes if, if, you know, that were omitted.
Let me play the devil's advocate. Uh, March, November, we got a fall August. And you got a thousand people coming in here. You can rent your, your campsite out. Or am I incorrect in saying that?
Yeah, you said that. That's all true, yeah, that's, and I don't know what would be more beneficial. That's what I'm trying to keep, trying to keep myself as unhandcuffed as I can. I, I, I'm agreeing to not make it a, 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 a parking lot and a campground. Just let me decide when it's going to be one or the other based on my needs, is, is all I'm asking for. Cause we may find, if they, if they announce they're gonna build a fourth nuclear plant. Then I'm gonna come back and ask to put in twenty more campers and, and we'll find some other lot somewhere else to park trucks, right? I, I mean, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, I'm just, you know.
You're also in.
And I.
Your uh. Delineation redo, in new, do this year.
Being done in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I mean, to, to Kevin's point. When we applied for this, we applied for a campground permit. We didn't apply for a summer campground permit, we applied for a campground permit. During discussions with the board, there's been talk, you know, we, we've been very transparent from the get-go, probably too transparent is where I'm feeling now, but. Um, you know, I came in and said, hey, the intent here is to use these in the, in the summer, park trucks in the winter. You know, not realizing we were gonna come into this, you know, is it, is it a parking lot or is it a campground thing, right? That's, that's all kind of evolved through discussions, so I, I think the public was told that we are applying for a campground permit. I'm, I guess I'm.
And in all fairness, Al, part of the, part of the public comment was in relation to the trucks.
Which is why this condition is, is being entertained, that, that I'm, that you're limiting my ability to park there when it's a campground. I'm agreeing to that. That satisfies, or, or at least addresses, maybe it doesn't satisfy, but it addresses the issue of. Of this being a, a parking lot with nine campers scattered in it. I would, you know, I would have to, I mean, any one of these conditions, I would think you would, i- if, if this were to go to court or something.
Don't even bring that up.
No, I'm just saying, if, I mean, if.
Don't even, don't even go that out.
There's a, you, you have to justify them with what is the public need for that, right? What's the, what public good is served by limiting this campground to only during the summer? I mean, I would think, I mean, I sit on a planning board, those are the questions we have to ask ourselves is. You know, what is the purpose of putting this condition on it? I understand the purpose of limiting commercial parking. You don't want it to look like a parking lot with nine campers. I don't know what the public good served is in saying, well, you can only operate during the summer. Is it, you know, I don't know, I.
What's the public good served to being there at all?
Would be what?
Being there at all. What, what does that serve?
Well, I mean, if you can, if you can justify that it shouldn't be there at all, and that serves the public good, and it, and it affords me fair and legal use of my property, then.
We're trying to, we're trying to bend over backwards for you. To let you get this thing through. And we've scheduled you in front of people to get you in here. And I think we're trying to be fair with you. As I said before, I want you to be successful. But not at the expense of the town. Is that, is that clear?
I hear what you're saying.
Do you, are you here, but do you understand? No, you know. I can see my face. Alright, let's keep going here, cause this is.
So we're still stuck on C, and if, but if, but maybe, maybe we're not anymore. Is there a consensus that it could be? It could be a, a year-round operation, but he's limited, if it is, he's limited in his parking. And just by way of.
The last sentence uh, does make sense. It says, uh, if a deeper winter use were required, would be allowable. Let's also go, providing the heavy vehicles. Storage were not present. I believe the board's concern was that. This should be a storage. I, I.
Lot or a campground, but not both simultaneously.
And, and I think that's where we're going with this.
So are we striking C altogether?
I think we've got it covered down, down below.
The next, well, the next three are easy, cause they're all, there's no issue. D, E, and F are fine. I think G is now, would say, our, our, each R V shall be registered.
That's fine.
And, and striking sure?
I don't, yeah. I don't be, need, I don't mean to be obnoxious about this, but one last time, any issue with striking uh, C?
Kevin, you're stuck on something, let's get it out.
I'm, because I don't know that there's, maybe there isn't consensus on that. So, but before I start crossing my copy out, I just want to be. Sure that, you know, we're, that, that C's not a required because we've addressed it in I below with the parking. And to your point, uh. That it should be a storage lot or a campground, but not both simultaneously. So if it's, if it's a year-round campground, then it can't be a, a storage lot.
So, we can take that out, and when we get to I, we'll just make, we'll make that make sense where that's out of there. If it's, if it's occupied, it's a campground, and you can't have any of the other stuff.
Right. Yeah, and I think I, I did put that in there when I, when I edited it to say that uh, to be parking. Specified areas contained in the current site plan when the campground is in operation.
That was in your new one.
Correct.
I didn't write that, I don't take your hand.
No, that's all right, I.
So do.
Listen, after the dust settles tonight, however it shakes out.
Yeah, we're gonna give a new one, that won't be signed tonight anyway, so.
Correct, correct. Yep.
If we misunderstood something.
Yep. Alright, so I'm striking C. So D will be the new C and so on.
Right. Right.
To your point, Dan?
Yes, sir.
I, uh, although I may not agree that the timeline on this has been, uh, as good as it could have been, I do appreciate you guys going through this tonight, and I do acknowledge that you're bending over backwards to try to work through these. So, thank you.
Like I said, we want you to be successful. Uh, we're trying to do right by you, but also by the town. I mean, fair is fair, that's all I can tell you. Under, uh, where are we Kevin? G?
I mean.
Yeah, you took off the shirt.
G, uh, each RV shall be registered.
Yep.
Um, H, which is now the new G, is just following, we're incorporating the recommendations of the county planning, um, board as, uh, incorporating by reference, except that the twenty-four foot ingress egress driveway is depicted in the current site plan will be permitted. I don't, I think that their comments came in before that was delineated. Cause when you look at the, the county's comments, they said, right now, it's a wide open parking area.
There, there was no.
You could pull in and out anywhere you want. We recommend one designated egress and ingress. Well, the applicant came up with two, but with a buffer area, and I, I don't, we've certainly improved that in past plans. So I don't, I don't see an issue with that. And then, uh, I, which is now the new H, is the, is the parking. Do you want me to read that again, just so we're all clear on that?
I, you, you still got them two designated areas in there.
Yep, for sure. Yep.
Me and Missy don't agree with that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yep.
Yeah, so you can either way, then I can vote for him. And keep cashing.
Are you disagreeable for two different reasons? Cause I think what I heard you say Vinny is that you, needs three acres of land for the campground. And.
No, I think, I think, I think he's, I think it's still the same idea, okay?
That includes parking for the, the people that are at the campers.
Sure, sure.
Right, he's, he's defined it a little better than that.
But not three trucks piled on top of each other in his parking lots like he has now. So if we get rid of that, when it's operating as a, you can push him back to the delineation on the edge or get a permit to go on to the, that's, that's his field. The campground is a campground.
Right. So the, the designated parking areas in the site plan that we're calling out here, the hundred by one sixty-five, or one forty-five by fifty.
Right.
One sixty-five, one forty-five, yep.
That we originally agreed he could use off-season.
Correct, right.
Right.
Like, I, you can fill up every inch of it during off-season.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's.
If he has one, it may not, he may find that it's better to run the campground, I don't know, what, our goal.
I mean, like I said, Vinny's got the statistics with the acreage, but it's still, I think, the basically the same thing, is we're still saying the same.
In the absence.
Same end result.
It's a seven and a half acre parcel, if you remove those two pieces, it's still in excess of three acres. There isn't, there isn't anything within the law that says that it has to be square in shape or rectangular in shape, or, I mean, we could, we could draw out the campground area, three acres, any way we wanted. And, and I, I mean, the campground I was in this morning, the person's house is in the center of it, and the campground surrounds their entire house. You know, so I mean, in, to, to Vinny's point, even if you omit the parking areas in size, the, there's still over three acres of land there, so.
That's exactly what I said. Just take them out of the.
Out of the campground area, yeah.
You've delineated your campground, put it out by the road, draw a straight line at three acres, and whatever's behind that, up to your delineation line.
My point is, is we don't, there's nothing, there's nothing delineating a three acre campground, it's a seven and a half acre campground.
Well, we're gonna.
That has, that meets the three acre requirement, and it has two designated parking areas in it. If you remove those, it's still three acres.
Okay, done. You go with Vinny's three acres, and then I'll go back to my original thing, is you want a campground or a parking lot? I don't agree with.
I've heard enough.
The way it's set up, period. That's, yeah. I agreed with it the first time, you could park the vehicles there, that, with the way it was written, that was fine, I was fine with that. Park them there off-season, I don't think they should be there during the season. It's way too many vehicles. Originally, I thought your intent, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe I heard wrong, I, I'll willingly say that. I thought the original tent was parking was for a few of your work trucks that the guys that were there were using. That's what I thought. That was my assumption. If I'm under the wrong assumption, then I apologize, all right? But that's what I was thinking by a parking lot with your campground.
That was said.
Okay? Like I said, if I misunderstood, then I apologize.
If there's, if there's nine, if there's nine campers and there's two guys staying in each camper, that's eighteen trucks.
Well, that's more.
Just to, just to support the nine campers.
Well, you got, you got parking spaces by your camper, don't you? Or no? So that's nine spots right there, you don't need a parking area.
We're, we're limiting the parking from the entire facility to two very, in my opinion, fairly small designated areas when the campground's open. I, I can live with that.
I guess what I'm confused with in, in I, is off-season. All right.
Cause that's the way we originally wrote it.
All right.
And now we're changing.
You're restricting the parking to these two areas.
No, that's what I'm, I'm, that's the way it was written. That's what I'm trying to change. I believe that when we talked, it was my understanding that I could have limited parking there when the campground's open.
Right.
Unlimited parking when the campground's closed. That's not what got written. That's why I'm here tonight to try to say, hey, I would like this written different, because I don't think that's what the board intended. I don't think there was ever a discussion, or at least I'm not aware of any discussion, that said that I couldn't use the property at all for parking in the summer, and I could only use a small portion of it in the winter. I mean, that, that, that would never stand up that, that I've got all this land and I can only park in this, in these two small areas when, when there's nothing else being, that the property's being used for?
Well, you're, you're restricted by the wetlands too. And that's just, it's the nature of the property.
Mm-hmm.
You may have seven acres, but, you know, you only have so many acres of usable land.
Which is why it's so important that.
I mean, it appears that that is the, this is the term that is, that we don't have consensus on.
The, the, the term off-season?
The concept of parking vehicles in-season, let's call it.
All right, then.
In, 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 you know, those designated areas.
Well, I guess my problem reading this now is that off-season, you can only park in the two designated areas.
No, we said in the off-season, he can park.
Dan's reading the version that I'm trying to get changed, thinking it's what's being proposed.
Here's, here's what I modified it to read, with a caveat that I don't know that there's consensus on this. So, it says, "Commercial vehicle parking of applicant's vehicles shall be permitted in the specified areas contained in the current site plan and shall be, I'm sorry, in the current site plan when the campground is in operation. And shall be confined to a space measuring one hundred and forty-five feet by fifty feet on the east side of the premises, and an area measuring one hundred feet by one sixty-five to the southeast of the RV site, provided the applicant remains one hundred feet outside the delineated wetland areas as the D, as determined by the DEC." Period. When the applicant shall be, that, I'm sorry, the applicant shall be allowed to park vehicles on the premises in off-season, utilizing all available space, provided the vehicles are parked outside the one hundred foot delineated DEC wetland area.
I can live with that. But I'm only, I'm only one person. I'm going back to you.
No, this is another thing I just thought of, I'm sorry.
Good, no.
Because, because I think, didn't we come up with the, the, weren't some of the complaints, the fact that some of the vehicles are kind of junk vehicles, that you're sharpening parts and everything up of.
Not in that area, but there is, there is some down to the other property.
There's some in the other place, all right. I, that's what I said, it's probably too late at this point, but anything that should park, there should be, as far as I'm concerned, be registered and, and spotted.
So when we started this.
Sorry.
Forty minutes ago.
Yeah.
And I, I charned, chimed in there and I, I was all in favor of it. Off-season, pretty much unlimited, he needs the space, kind of thing.
Right.
But the thing that's now got me a little befuddled is this off-season, that Dan keeps bringing it up. So off-season, you might be running all winter long, is that my understanding? Is there an off-season? What if you, what if you're keeping these things open all winter long?
You're talking about the campground?
Yeah.
I don't, I wanna be sure I understand the question you're asking for a answer.
Would you have these open all winter long?
I would, I would like to have the ability to have them open all winter long, but agreeing that if they are being utilized, then I'm limited to only parking in two small areas. So it's, so it's, yeah, I mean, I'm agreeing that if the campers are being utilized, it's not gonna look like a parking lot. If the campers are not being utilized, I mean, we may change, you know, in five years from now, it might be a different business. Maybe I house people in the winter and in the summer we're shut down. I don't, you know, I don't know, but I'm just agreeing to the concept that it's, it's not gonna have a hundred vehicles and nine occupied campers. It will be, you know, two designated, which when you look at us on a map, they're pretty small areas as compared to the entire lot, right? I mean, they're a hundred by a hundred and fifty or whatever, but my parking will be limited to those designated areas if the campers are being utilized. If the campground is open, we'll say, camper being utilized, people staying in it, however you wanna define that. Whether that's one month a year or ten months a year, both conditions, either we're parked in the designated areas only with fifty vehicles, let's say, as a maximum, or the campground's shut down and I've got everything home and there's a hundred and fifty vehicles there potentially. I, to me, that was the, that was the intent of the conversation initially. I don't, I don't think I'm asking for anything different than what has been talked about right along, but you know, Dan had said to me that, that was, the last time we were here, Dan said, well, in the winter, you can park as many of them there as you want. And then when I got the conditions, it, it said I couldn't, which surprised me, because I didn't think that's what Dan.
That's not what I understood.
Right.
That, that the off-season, it's parking.
Quite frankly, I think all of us are a little confused, because there's been so much.
There's been no changes to my site plan.
A lot of back and forth and trying to work it out and trying to make things, shift things around and, so.
But no, no change in my asks since February, February's meeting.
Kevin, are you satisfied with I, the way you've rewritten it?
I, um, I, I, I am, uh, I did. I, I think Missy does bring up a good point, that we don't want, you know, parts of cars parked there. So, you know, only registered vehicles are permitted to be parked on the premises.
We pull all of our vehicle registrations in the winter, cause I can't cancel my insurance otherwise on them. Just for conversation, but, um.
And I, I mean, I'm sensitive to that.
What?
I, I guess the point that Missy was making is we don't wanna see, you know, a truck body there that's a parts, you know, a parts vehicle that looks like that.
Whole and complete vehicles or something, that, I would, yeah, I'd have no objection to a clause at the end of that or something.
Junk vehicles are junk vehicles. I know it's, it's nice to scavenge parts off them.
There's five brand spanking new twenty-twenty-fives parked there right now. Cabin chassis, not registered, not insured.
Well, like I said, however you wanna phrase it, to get to the point that I, I would ask.
And you're right, there should not be junk vehicles.
We have a junk ordinance, and which defines, I don't have it in front of me, but it defines what a junk vehicle is. So if we say no junk vehicles are permitted to be parked on the premises, that should take care of it.
Works with me. Vinny, how do you feel about that?
I'm, I'm still, it's one or the other.
Okay, John?
Been on the fence and we're gonna have.
I was with you, but I think I'm more with Vinny, you know, with one or the other.
Okay, Steve?
I guess I'm sending out.
Okay.
I'm definitely one or the other. I, I have gone back and forth, in all fairness, I have, I have gone back and forth and changed my mind several times in the last month.
I think we all have.
And this is, I just gotta go with what I feel is the right thing to do. I gotta, I gotta just go with my conscience, and I feel like it's gotta be one or the other. Cause my original thought was park the vehicles that go with the campers, the, the, go with the guys that are staying in the campers, period. While this, while the campground's there. So, whatever.
And Jake?
I don't think you're gonna pave that parking lot, are you?
No.
I'm willing to let that go.
If they're one or the other.
As long as it's not happy.
Okay, so if there is a consensus that it should be one or the other, then let me suggest that in I, paragraph I, the only thing that would have to be changed is the phrase, shall be permitted, it, parking shall be permitted in specified areas contained in the site plan when the campground is not in operation.
But then, that does only limit them to parking there, right, not everywhere?
No, and then it, it, then it, uh, well.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
This can be confused.
So I don't know how that got mixed up when we originally wrote it, but like I said, my original thought was when we were having the areas, those areas were just gonna be for like the camper people, not, and I guess I didn't look at the dimensions carefully enough to think that it was gonna be way more than that.
You got these, these spots here.
Yeah, I guess, like I said, for the, we're just, yeah.
Patrons?
Yes, and then the outside areas were where he was gonna park the rest of the time, I guess. Like I said, it's.
If I were to read I right now, "Commercial vehicle parking of applicant's vehicles only shall be permitted in specified areas contained in the, if I were to read I right now, "Commercial vehicle parking of applicant's vehicles only shall be permitted in specified areas contained in the current site plan and shall be confined in a space measuring one forty-five by fifty on the east side of the premises, and one hundred by one sixty-five in the southeast corner. Applicant remains a hundred foot outside delineated wetline as determined by the DEC." All right, is, am, am I wrong in saying when it's in operation?
But I, I think that's the issue, right? If it's, if the campsite's in operation, there seems to be a consensus that they don't want parking. There seems to be a consensus that they don't want parking of extra vehicles.
No, and that's why I say, if this were to say, uh, when it's in operation, you're limited to these two areas.
But, but I don't think there's consensus here.
Well, then, I think it's the off-season, it's.
On top of that.
Maybe, let me, let me put this, in my mind's eye. I'm saying that in the winter, that space is parking lot. Where your vehicles are maxed out, I don't know, a hundred of them in there. But in the off-season, or in the, while it's in operation, we're limited to the two parking areas.
I understand that's what you're saying.
Is what Dan's saying.
I, I do.
Is what you're saying.
But I don't think there's consensus on that.
We're saying that's two big parking areas for the, uh, season.
I think, can I ask something?
Yeah, sure.
Do we have to define the season?
Well, that's what we attempted to do, but then.
It's kind of a.
It's a, it's a moving target, because if he's got an opportunity to basically operate year-round, and it's. It's, it's, makes economic sense for him to do that, then, you know, he doesn't want to be limited, and I don't blame him for that.
But we're gonna put the words operable in there, when they're, when the campground is in operation. You're limited to your two parking areas. When the campground is shut down. And your campers are winterized, then, any available space.
Again, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't, not hearing that everybody else is on the same page as you, Jan, Ken.
Missy and Benny are saying they just want to park the camper spots.
Right.
Well, or, or a few, like I said, I think of Benny's, I mean, I'm not going to speak for Benny, but I would see, say it's fine to have. One, maybe one area to park the trucks for the guys that are staying in the nine campers. But that's not, if you add up how many, that's not thirty, forty trucks.
Back lot at K and G Lodge has a bunch of boats, all in row, probably fifteen, twenty of them. All parked in a parking lot within a campground, right down the street.
Do we put this to a vote?
At some point, we do.
Well, I think we're at that point right now. Alright, we got three options, approve, disapprove, or approve with conditions.
Well, we've got conditions.
We've got the conditions.
Alright.
I think we've done now.
The, the, the question becomes whether those conditions are acceptable to consensus of the board, of the board.
That's correct.
At least three of you.
So are we voting on the project, or are we voting on the conditions? What are we voting?
There's three, there's, if the project is either approved or disapproved. Or approved with the conditions that we've just tried to go.
I mean, if, let's, I don't, again, just trying to facilitate this, but if, if every other condition is acceptable to a consensus of this board. But we have one condition that isn't, then I, you know, we either. We put the whole thing up for a vote, and let it, let the, let the, the chips fly where they may, or. You try to work out what is acceptable. Uh, whether you're removing that condition altogether, or modifying it some way, so that. The, the rest of this gets approved. That's how I see it, but.
Well, that's kind of the way I see it too, but I guess, everybody does the same way I would. Same with you. Um, I have no problem putting this up to a vote, but remember, we're voting on the whole project. Now, Missy, what do you, what, what, what do you want to see down?
I want it to be a campground, not a parking lot, when the campground is.
So you want no vehicles parked there?
Hmm, that's not what I said.
No.
Limited vehicles that go with the campers, is that, I mean. Not, not parking work vehicles, not parking.
There's just one part of this.
Other than what you're there, just a few that are, that.
It, yeah, just to, to be clear, it seems like every other condition we've talked about is, is generally acceptable to, to, to everyone here. But this one in particular, I. Doesn't, there's, there's not consensus, in fact, there might be, you know, four against it, and you're only one in favor of it. And if you put the whole thing up for a vote, probably gonna fail.
It's gonna fail.
But I'm not sure that that does a, a service to anyone here.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a middle of the road here someplace.
Thanks, Benny.
So we're saying the same thing, when it's in operation, right?
No, we're not saying the same thing.
What are we saying?
When it's in operation, they don't want any commercial vehicles parked there whatsoever.
Is that what you're saying?
No, no, wow.
Only three acres. He, he's got about twenty-two thousand square feet left.
Where is the three acres delineated? How do I know the limits of the three acres?
We're not gonna do, we got an acre here, and then nothing, and then an acre over here, there's gonna be one continuous.
You, you're saying that I can't park within the three acres, I don't know where that is. I have seven and a half acres, what three acres is it?
You have clearly four, a quarter acres of usable property without the delineate, with the delineation from the DEC. According to the measurements that are on this, this drawing.
So what about the vehicles that we need to service the campground, where do we park them?
We've told you three or four times that you're welcome to park them there.
Park some there, but, but the two areas, if you combine how many vehicles he said will fit in there, it's too many.
But you just said that you only want vehicles that go with the campers parked there.
Well, based, and I said the workers, the workers, yeah.
So basically, you're saying you had eighteen vehicles at a minimum would be parked there when this occupied, two vehicles per.
Two guys per camper.
A, a vehicle per person.
And, and both guys brought their boat, wanna, you know, got their ATVs, I mean, you go down the road, Eric Bechers has got eight, ten trailers. Per camper, you know, they got, they have ATVs in there that they go riding every weekend, and that's a, that's an unregulated campground down there. But, I, you guys know my position. I'm, I'm trying to accommodate, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, to utilize the, the, the property that I have. The best I can, um, I'm, I'm sensitive to the idea that it. Needs to not look like a parking lot when it looks like a campground, there's two small pieces of land that I'm asking to build a park on, and, and. Forfeiting all the rest of it while the campground's open. That's. I, I, yeah, that, that's where it's at, that's, I, I need to be able to utilize the property, and I think I have the legal right to utilize the property. So, well. But, but, I mean, this started with my point of, if we're saying that I can't park within the three acres that's designated as a campground, there is no three acres designated as a campground. I don't know where I could park then, if that were what the board were to pass. We'd have to go back and delineate where the three acres of campground is versus the rest of the lot. Cause that's never been, the, the law says I have to have a minimum of three acres to build a campground, I have seven and a half. Doesn't say you have to have a minimum of three, not in a wetland, outside of a, but it says a minimum of three acres to have a campground, I got seven and a half. Omit the two parking spots, I still weigh over three. I can't just have a seven and a half acre lot with nine campers parked on it, and that's all I can do with it. That's, and I think that's an unreasonable demand of the town, and I would.
Actually, I don't even know if my number's right, he might not even have three acres there to the delineation. Cause I'm going, I'm squaring it off to the, to the deepest spot, and it, it cuts back towards the road pretty good where he's got the other parking spot. Wait for Kevin to write something up here, is that what he's doing, or?
I'm trying.
I mean, where I'm going with this, what I'm hearing you all say is that parking shall be, um. Restricted or limited to campground-related uses and activities when the campground is open. But, you know, can be, can be utilized for commercial parking when it's not. I mean, essentially, that's what I'm hearing you say. I don't think that, you know, the, the, the applicant is agreeable to that, but again, to your point, it's not. It, it, it's not a negotiation as much as it is trying to get, uh, some reasonable, um, conditions.
We've never done this before.
Well, it's.
To be honest with you, we, we're trying to accommodate you.
Never say never, but, yeah.
Yeah, I know. Alright. Can, can you finish your, your thoughts on this, Kevin, and then we'll see if that. We'll fit in if not, and I'm gonna call for a vote.
Alright, so this is what I've written down, um, parking shall be restricted to campground-related uses and activities. When the campground is open, when the campground is not operational, parking of commercial vehicles utilized by the applicant. Shall be permitted in all areas, provided the vehicles are parked outside the one hundred-foot delineated DEC wetland. Unless otherwise permitted by the DEC.
Sounds simple enough.
Uh, you know, the, what, what I'm concerned about is, is, um. The, the little bit of wiggle room we're talking about. Um, so that's why I say camp, campground-related uses and activities. Um, and I think the, the, the point was, you know, is there a limit to that, right? You know, if, if somebody comes in with a, with a boat and a, you know, whatever else they've got, all their toys. And they need a place to park, that's campground-related activity, right, they're allowed to park in those designated areas. That's what I'm hearing people say. Equally, what I'm hearing people say is they don't want, you know, the commercial, and then chase commercial vehicles. Parked, if it's being utilized as a campground. When it's not being utilized as a campground, you can park anywhere on the site. And if he gets permission from the DEC to park in the wetland, I guess, that might be permitted as well.
I don't know how we police, I mean, it all sounds good, but.
Well, all of it's.
Guys are, guys are here for a week, and then they're gone, okay, it's not a campground anymore, so we don't, it looks like it looks now. Then, guys are back, oh, I gotta move all my stuff. Where do we start and stop, and, I, I don't know the answer. I'd be willing to give the, the fifty by a hundred and forty-five, an extra parking for.
And get rid of the bigger one, right?
Get rid of the big ones in the back.
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
And then when he's not open, like I said, I, if every vehicle, everything he owns is there.
As lo, as long as it's functional.
How do we police open, close? In use, not in use?
Is that where we say the season? Call it a season, so it's not like.
We've scrapped C, which delineated marks in November.
No, I get that, but like Benny's, to Benny's point is.
How do you determine when the season is?
Well, that's fine, bring it up off-season, if he says he could extend it and go through the winter. Now that opens up that whole baywater, so. So now we can't park at all.
Well, right, I, yeah, I don't know if there's a.
Well, to his point, if it turns into that, that he needed, he, it's more cost-effective for him to be open all winter.
Right.
He's gonna find someplace else.
To park his cars, or get trucks.
Is that, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I don't, it'd be easy if it was just a, a campground. I don't know, we just call a vote?
Alright, you have three actions, approve, disapprove, or approve with, uh, conditions.
So now you're talking the whole project?
The whole project.
Yep.
You're up first.
I'm up first.
So are we saying the conditions as they stand right now?
Conditions of the project.
So are we, so how did we leave the, the parking?
The I, with what he just wrote, right?
Okay, so, it, it, so, okay, so the new, the new.
Or do we want to delineate that one area? Is that what you did? Did you delineate that one area or no?
If you're now saying you would allow, so are you saying that you, you're okay with vehicles? You know, chase enterprise vehicles that are used.
Or boats and four-wheelers, like he said, what, you know, whatever.
Campground-related.
No, I.
Campground-related.
Campground-related, not business-related, not.
Right, well, I mean, some of them might be business vehicles, because if he's, obviously he's using a chase truck, I would think they'll haul the camper if they're going anywhere.
Well, I guess that's what we need to be clear on. It's a, it, it is an important issue at that point, is what's.
Right.
Right?
I just don't want fifty trucks over there in a campground.
Um, can I ask a question on that, just for my own clarity? The, the, the property where the campers sit, the, the, the small parcel where the nine campers sit, I understand what that land can be used for. When the campground is open, what is allowable on the rest of the property? It sounds like nothing. It just has to be vacant land. Right? Nothing can be parked there, I can't set campers up there, I can't do anything with it.
Could it park there?
I could have what, a park?
A little park.
Put it in a soccer, soccer tournament thing or something, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm, it's a serious question, I want to know what.
It's a serious answer.
Okay.
You know, if you look at campgrounds, it gives you what's allowable, what's not. You know?
So the, the, the one forty-five by fifty designated parking area. Uh, would be allowed for campground-related parking. Such as boats or. Extra, extra vehicles.
But no campground's vehicles could be parked outside of that, so the rest of the area cannot be used for any parking at all. Campground-related or not, it sounds like.
Well, how, let's, just by, four, one forty-five by fifty, how many?
It's a very big.
Vehicles could you fit? Vehicles could you fit in that area? If you're talking. Ten by eighteen, right, is roughly a parking space.
Not for my vehicles, even a boat, my boat's fifty feet long.
Wait, one? Fifty.
You're still gonna have.
Ten by twenty-four.
These vehicles at the campground, because the drivers drive company vehicles.
But there's a designated parking pad next to each trailer, so there's nine vehicles there that can be.
This is it, this is just overflow.
This overflow. Correct.
Correct.
It shouldn't, shouldn't have to be that big.
Let's come up with some numbers, Ilfe.
I'm at a loss, I mean, there's, is it, is it? People come here and wanna do, then we have to put ten different stipulations on it to make it fit into what it's supposed to be. Is it really what it, you know, I'm, I'm. There's no zoning, both uses are permitted, the whole town is a multi-use. Area.
Whatever Kevin goes up with is gonna be the final. Win, lose, or draw.
Well, so what I heard is that if you're allowing campground related. Parking in the one forty-five by fifty designated parking area. What I've, what I've put in is parking in the one hundred forty foot by fifty foot parking area on the east side of the premises. Shall be allowed for campground related uses and activities when the campground is open. When the campground is not open, parking of commercial vehicles utilized by the applicant shall be permitted in all areas. Provided the vehicles are parked outside the one hundred foot delineated DEC wetland unless otherwise permitted by the DEC. If you can get the, the DEC to allow them to park cars in the designated wetland. The delineated wetland area, a hundred foot buffer. You're supposed to stay out, and, and really what the, what the regulations say is you're to remain out of the one hundred foot designated. Wetland area. Unless you, you apply for a permit. For whatever use you're proposing within the hundred foot buffer. It's not a, it's not a, a blanket exclusion. It forces the, the landowner applicant to apply for a permit for whatever that activity is. Right? Is that consistent with your understanding too, John? You've got probably the most experience here on that, but. So if, you know, if. The DEC permits parking in those areas, then it, it, it would be allowed. But what this is saying is that when the campground is open, that one forty-five by fifty foot area. Is allowed for campground related uses and activities. When it's not open, not operating as a campground, use the whole site as long as you're staying outside the delineated wetland. Unless otherwise permitted by the DEC.
Thank you.
Delineated wetlands or outside the buffer?
The del- the, the one hundred foot wetland delineation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could do that.
Do what you're made for.
You're next.
Next in line.
I'm talking about it.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, I'm. Yeah, I'm with it.
Alright, then it looks like we're gonna go to a vote. I think that we are very fair with these. Like I say, you've got the option to approve, disapprove, or approve with conditions.
Let me, um, let, state it a different way, Dan.
Yeah.
So every resolution is prepared to be voted on in the affirmative. So in other words, this is the resolution with conditions. Alright, so we've already, what we're considering is approving with conditions. So that's what's being put up for a vote, it's a motion to approve the site plan application of, uh, of, uh. Alan Chase Enterprises with conditions as.
Stated in the resolution.
Right, so then the, so then that's the vote, it's either yes to approve.
On the resolution or on the whole project?
Yeah, on the whole project.
Yeah.
That, that includes all of those conditions.
Alright, better.
So I, it just, I just want, it's always stated, uh, any resol- any motion is always stated in the affirmative. You don't, you don't put a motion up to, to deny a, an, an application. The application's denied if it doesn't get the, the votes, right? But in this case, resolution is to approve the application, the site plan application. And, um, and, and resolutions with conditions.
So, that, that would be a yes vote or a no vote?
Correct.
So, so these conditions are actually worse than what we started with tonight. Just throwing that out there, but go ahead.
Does everybody understand the, how we're gonna expand this first vote?
Yes or no, right?
Yes or no?
Uh, no.
Is he?
No.
Any?
No, it's, it's, no.
No, I guess.
Okay. Make it in there, this.
So what I need to do is prepare, who made the motion, who seconded it?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
John.
Alright, let me ask one more time for a vote. Cause we haven't, you know, we made, we, you took a vote, you took a straw vote frankly, the first time, cause you didn't have a motion and a second on the floor. So now that you have a motion, a second.
Are we going to approve the resolution we had written with the, uh, conditions?
Right, there's a motion made by Kehoe, seconded by Law.
Yes.
No.
John?
No. No.
No.
Good.
I would've said yes.
You're voting yes? So what I need to do is prepare this resolution as, as modified. The vote is recorded as one in favor for opposed. And, and so therefore it's denied, but it, I mean, it's still a resolution that needs to be finalized. And filed with the, with the town clerk. And then.
Over there.
Process plays out after that.
Okay.
Are you breaking it?
No. Hey, what's the smart growth, uh, grant?
Yeah.
Yes or no? No, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, you know, it's, I, I, well. The. State process and the, the grant criteria, uh, does require. That the, that money's, grant money's not be expended. Or that money's not be extended, expended before the grant is awarded. So any money that the town expends before a grant is awarded can't be reimbursed.
I'm, I'm gonna say we oughta put a pin in it for now, go for the grant. Uh, they asked, uh, John to provide us with what it's gonna cost for two informational meetings. To get a better feeling.
Right.
And, and go forward with that and, uh.
The, the county, the county did say, the county planning department will help us with mapping. Free of charge. They will, they will help plot out the zones, potential zones in the town. My idea was to take, we've already got the, the, the map that shows every individual lot. Property in the town. I don't think, it, it's a, it's a heavy, bit of a heavy lift, but maybe with technology, it's an easier one. You identify the property class code for each property and just color key it. So every resident will show up as, you know, pick a color, green. Every industrial class will, you know, will be gray and whatever. And, and then you might be able to see how somewhat, you know, organically the town has evolved without zoning. Cause you, and you're gonna find, there's gonna be pockets of residential areas, there's gonna be a pretty well-defined industrial area. And there's gonna be commercial, right? And from there, you can start to envision what zones might look like. But the, the county's willing to do that for us, according to Tim Stahl. And it's a service they, they will provide without extra compensation from the town.
Will do that regardless if we go through with the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. I wish Kelly was here. What are you gonna do about LaBella contract? Right now, we do not have a contract with him.
Right.
But I did get billed five hundred and thirty bucks for the last meeting.
When did that grant have to be in?
Well, it, by the end of July, that's the, the deadline is July thirty-first.
If they're still world, willing to put in for the grant, well, for thirty-two, thirty-two hundred.
It, it essentially.
I think it was a thirty-seven, something like that.
It effectively, um. Pushes the project back a good year.
Yeah. Well, if we're gonna ask for the grant, the minimum grant is seventy-five thousand.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Well. Yeah.
We could spend that. Do we, I guess legally, what are we gonna do with LaBella?
Well, we have, we haven't, we've awarded the contract, we haven't signed the contract.
Right.
You know, if we don't sign it, it gets rescinded.
I have a question.
What, what?
Do you have to go to the bathroom?
Oh yeah, you better go.
Yeah, now that I've stood up. But I'll be right back.
So what happened with, I thought we were all set with them.
With LaBella?
Yeah.
No.
We had a meeting, there was, uh.
Yeah.
John and, uh, this young lady from LaBella. And Kelly and Kevin and I, a Zoom meeting.
Oh, okay.
And she informed us that we could not apply for a grant and have it retroactively approved. So before we, um, if we spend money now, we're not gonna get it reimbursed. And the minimum grant from this smart growth grant is seventy-five thousand, that's the minimum we can ask for.
I thought somebody had already said it was retroactive.
Given the incorrect information.
Bad, bad information from Albany.
From Albany.
Surprise, surprise.
Alright, has anybody looked at? That campground law from London?
I didn't, but it's been a. Quickly.
Could you take?
I, I think I ran through it when I was looking at campground stuff, but.
Take a look at it and see if, if it really applied to us. Cause I'm not in favor of reinventing the wheel if we don't have to. But as far as, uh, going past that anymore zoning activities, if we're, uh. If we're not gonna be able to move forward, I don't see any effort, uh, reason to put any effort into it. At this point. You know, we can pay for two meetings and, and get a straw vote from the people. There is no referendum required.
Right.
For zone.
Need to ask LaBella if, if we, we're not gonna have the me- they're, they're not gonna have, be able to have the meetings before they put the, the grant application in. So, gotta start the grant application, get that rolling.
Yeah.
Right, which I thought they were on yet.
Can we, can we turn the, if we were awarded the grant, can we pull it? Say we don't want it, if, if all the feedback is people losing their minds about zoning? I mean, that's, that's the way it was left, would.
Kind of the question that was asked, if we go forward with the grant application. And, uh. We had the straw vote meetings.
Yeah.
And if people are dead or set against it.
Right.
Can we pull the application?
Oh yeah, not only can you pu- well, I mean, you could pull the application, or if you get awarded the, the grant, you say, yeah, thanks, but no thanks. But, you know, um, but yeah, and, and doing like some community engagement. Meetings while the application is pending doesn't, doesn't spoil the application.
Uh, I've asked for quotes on two meetings provided to be, um, monitored or managed by, uh, LaBella. You know, they're the experts, they, they do this for eleven, uh, give us the pros and cons.
Yeah, issue's one of timing, I suppose, I mean, if, if we're gonna, like, do we, do we apply for the, for the grant regardless of? You know, before we have a community engagement meeting, which only gives us thirty days and.
Right, you're not gonna get the.
Less than that, because.
You're not gonna get the engagement meeting in that, that short a time.
Right.
No, but the, uh.
And if we don't do it now, we're pushing out, asking. And if we don't do it now, we're pushing out, asking for the grant for another year, that we're three years down the road instead of two.
Cause I would go for the grant, and we could self-fund the uh meetings if we have to, money's in the budget.
Yeah, I mean, the, if you recall, the, LaBella was, uh, the town agreed to hire LaBella to do the grant application for a separate amount, which was what the.
I know, it was thirty-two fifty.
That's what I was looking for, I thought I got it.
It's, it's right there.
No, it's not on here.
Oh no, there's.
No, it's not, I don't think it's on here.
It's like, yeah, it's a three grand.
And it's pretty cheap.
So.
But I thought we had already go, uh, agreed to go ahead with that.
Well, we didn't go, but.
The grant application.
We, we did, but again, we um.
We got mixed information.
There's a little bit of mixed information, there's a, a minimum requirement, as Dan mentioned, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar grant. And uh, and there is a match on the part of the town, I think it's, is it seventy-five, twenty-five, or is it?
Ninety-ten.
Ninety-ten, yes. So.
For seventy-five hundred bucks.
Right.
You know, being seventy-five thousand.
You're, you're just, you know, you're delaying it for a period of time, but you can still gather information, you can still engage the county, it's not gonna cost us anything.
Well, what I'm looking at is the, the zoning commission putting a lot of their hours into something that may not happen.
Yeah, the, the.
I don't, if, uh, may I?
You may.
I don't think it's time wasted depending on how you, um, what you decide to do with the time. Historically, um, actually the county was very helpful in years ago, years ago, when he came in and did an informational session, et cetera, about zoning. I mean, it's very interesting, the historical path that this has taken. I personally think that um, the efforts that we put in won't go to nought. But, how can I say this, uh. If you were couching it into what we know, like your meetings or whatever you wanted to do, uh, that we can pay for or whatever, and then depending on the grant. The other thing is the grant thing that we sort of, sort of all thought, thought it was, went through, you know, it's surprising to me that we find out about this at a meeting. Um, it'd been good, obviously there are things that happened through this whole quest few weeks. Um, but I think it caught us by surprise, uh, for zoning, that it wasn't, I mean, am I, am I speaking, misspeaking?
You're right.
That you've chosen and you have the plenty or whatever, they're, they're engaged to see this through, good, bad, or indifferent, um, you know, you've shared your vision. Uh, whether we're on, you know, whether we're for it, against it, or whatever, but we, I think we owe it to ourselves and to the community to do the exploration.
Well, it wasn't our vision, it was the comprehensive plan vision of.
That we did, that we embraced, I'm sorry, I misspoke, you, you, you're right.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Lori, it's, it's an exercise, it does, is, is not for, for nothing, I mean, it, it, it actually is quite, quite helpful. You, you know, it's an issue of timing at this point, right? So the CFA process has a hard deadline of July thirty-first, but they don't make a determination until usually around election time. It's just the way it is, November, December, right? So then, then there's a ramping up, everybody that was awarded a grant, you know, you, it spills into January, February, March of twenty-sixth. Until you really start getting going, and now we're right back to, you know, the spring of, of next year. To spend that money, which by the way, we don't get reimbursed on until.
Right.
Uh, until we hit certain benchmarks. It's not a, it's not, a lot of grants in the state of New York are, are reimbursable after the project is completed. That, we did get clarification on this, that these are reimbursable expenses as you go along. But you have to, you have to hit certain benchmarks and criteria.
I don't see us getting turned down, being one of the few towns that don't have.
Right.
So, so what's the holdup on the, the payment for the grant?
Tell LaBella you'll give them the seventy-five, but they've gotta carry it until we get the grant and start billing us.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna want thirty-two hundred or thirty-three hundred bucks to fill up a grant application. Alright, and then if we had to fund the seventy-five hundred, we could still fund that out of ours.
We got two years for that, basically.
Yeah, I, I think it's worth it to, 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 to go for the grant, um, I think it becomes a much better product. Um, and we, we can't do it, we, you know, the one thing that was emphasized by a number of people is you, you don't wanna just do this on your own, you've gotta bring in professional planners and consultants.
It's uh Paula Gilbert, and I'll meet, that was her message.
Yeah, it's too big a, too big a, uh, an issue and an opportunity, and on the heels of the announcement that was made just yesterday. We may be getting a fourth plan out here, um, yeah, we need somebody. And I think that, that frankly helps strengthen our, our application.
That's another reason we need it. Between two directions and.
Let me, let me play devil's advocate. Can, uh, and I'll approach this with John, can we ask LaBella to put in the application? For thirty-two, whatever the hell it is, and we'll fund the ten percent? Or do they want the full contract signed?
Oh, I don't know, prob- they probably would do the uh, the, the application only.
And then two readings.
Whatever that works out to, yeah.
They're the ones that came up with.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's why they build it separately, I think, when they create the application and go on, and we're like, yeah, and then, and then the price, if we did, if we had them do the zoning.
So let them do that and then.
So I thought it was all settled that we were.
At least we're moving forward.
I didn't sign.
Okay.
I'm not gonna sign the contract till we get.
Right.
I might even, yeah, Kelly signed it.
For the grant application?
No, for the, for, for the overall.
For the overall contract.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm just saying right now, we've gotta get him, we gotta pay him the, and the first one, which I thought we were already set, that's why, that's the misconception I'm under. I thought we already agreed to go with that.
We either authorized.
We did, and then more, they brought more, and then they got sick, so we didn't have the meeting, so.
Well, no, we got it, we got into that. What if the people don't want, they don't get, really get a vote on it?
Right, right, but the grant's still gotta get.
Right.
So.
And but if we.
Our informational meetings are just as important as a grant.
The most. If they would put the application in.
I'm surprised if six thousand people show up at the town and then they're all saying no, shouting at the top of their lungs, it's, it's death.
Well, let's, let's move forward with it as much as we can.
That's why it's important to present it properly.
That's why we need professionals for that.
That's why we need them, we need professionals to present it properly.
The um, so I think the, you, you know, your option is to spend the, whatever, the thirty, call it four grand.
Four grand.
The informational meetings or not. Uh, and do the application, hold off on the contract because you can't start spending that money, or else you disqualify yourself from the grant.
Or we're gonna lose it if we spend, I mean, if we sign that.
And the grant's not guaranteed, but, you know, we all think that we've got a pretty good shot at it under the circumstances. It's just gonna delay the actual.
I'd rather delay it than throw fifty grand away.
Yeah, the alternative is you go, just go forward and you plow through and, and it's self-funded, but the members of the town board are on record saying, we're not just self-funding this, we're applying for a grant. So I think we, you know, we have to go for the grant.
Oh, I have, absolutely, that's the first thing we oughta do. I'll see if I can get ahold of him tomorrow, John, maybe we're gonna end up with a.
I sent him that housing study, I, I included him if you, you know.
Well, I saw it, yeah.
I, I sent it late only because I just got it late this afternoon, but it's, I sent you a link to the uh, to the study.
One hundred pages.
Yep.
Alright, what else we got?
Nothing.
Okay.
I'm tired.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I.
Go ahead. I'm trying to make it, I might wake up.